I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to go a little out of sequence. We're going to go with the waiver review on Sunset WHBLLC, Seven Sunset Avenue, Unit H.
Good afternoon. Kitrick Moats, 54 Montauk Highway, Quag, New York, for the applicant. This is in order to transfer property to retail. The tenants are Palmer and Purchase that were in the building that got, that caught fire on Main Street, and they're looking for new office space or retail space. And so we're here to make that application.
Does anybody have any comments on this application?
No.
I think we're prepared to grant a waiver. I need a motion to grant the waiver of site plan.
I make that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Alright. Alright. Is there anybody else we can take next? Alright, let's go, Gables. Good afternoon, noon. Good afternoon, Mr. Yum.
As you know, we are here seeking modification of the planning board approval you provided for the Gables some, some time ago, and in two specific areas. The first is, we wanted to realign the phases. There's still, I think, eight units in the public areas in Phase 1A, but it's a different eight units than what was originally approved. We submitted a map to, to show that, and the Phase 1A includes the landscape across, along Montauk Highway, the area of the septic, and as well as the center corridor of, of the property. And then 1B is what used to be part of 1A. We're just kind of shifting. And the other thing we're here to talk about tonight is the landscape plan. There was a landscape plan submitted and approved in the original project, and we're seeking to substantially increase the amount of landscape that we're providing. I had provided, hopefully you've got digital copies. I don't know if you printed them out or not. You seem to have, is that the new landscape plan?
This is the one.
Okay, okay. And we had submitted some photographs as well. I don't know if you have those with you, showing, basically emphasizing the entrance areas from, from the highway. We brought our landscape architect with us tonight, so he can talk to you about the benefits that the new plan presents across the board. I don't know if you want to talk about the phasing first, because that seems pretty simple.
No, we want to talk about the landscape.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, Chris, if you want to come and introduce yourself and...
Now, this landscape plan is the landscape plan that you're currently working towards, so that you, I guess technically disregarded the approved plan. Would that be a safe thing to say?
No. So I was partly an oversight.
Why don't you come, why don't you come up too? Might as well. If you're going to speak, introduce yourself and...
I'm Ryan Janson, the owner and developer of the property. The takeaway from the prior meetings was, my understanding, and it could have been a misinterpretation, was so long as we met or exceeded the plantings that were there in complying with deer resistant and local variety, that we had the latitude to make these changes. I apparently did not interpret that correctly, which I apologize, but there should be no implication that we just went rogue here and decided to do things on our own and you're supposed to inherit it. Hopefully, in conversations with Brad, we've been working closely with you guys and trying to work through any, you know, any issues that we may have. So we did not ignore the initial plan. We tried to merely make it more substantial and more appropriate for, you know, the community.
So I'm Chris Vinay from the Banning Howl Club. Also have a nursery, 20-acre nursery in Wading River. Grow a lot of our own plant material. Most of this material that's on this plan. Have a degree in agronomy from Rutgers for turf and landscaping. So what I was trying to do in a lot of the stuff was to, to obviously deer resistant. We know that's the biggest problem here. But also, a much larger plan, plant that was called for, to give more privacy and to kind of screen that from Montauk Highway. With the entrance ways, with the, I guess you want to call them pergolas, we did beautify them with perennials that are deer resistant, to give you some color and some entrance way. We did take blue spruces, green giants, and on the inside, I don't know if you guys have seen on the inside, the caliber of plant that's put on the inside, that will also be seen coming down Montauk Highway, from six, seven-inch caliber plant material, eight-inch caliber plant material. That copper beach is probably, to buy it, five, $6,000 just by itself, but what you see on, from the corner of Montauk Highway. And also, we have the blue spruce, and behind it, we have that copper beach color. And then there's also a lot of native plant material. We used inkberry, bayberry, native grasses to stay with some indigenous plants, so...
That's on the inside?
Correct. Now, also, as we see, and as if you even go outside this building, as these plants grow, and I think the challenge of a landscape is to see what they're going to look like in five years, seven years, eight years down the road. And, and to be planting anything in front of this green wall, it's just going to be eaten by the plant material. So where we did with the pergolas, it was we brought the plant material back, so then this stuff can flourish and get great color. And it will be, all through the season, between the grasses and the color, you're going to have changes there. But to plant in front of that, we have the sidewalk that we're going to obviously have to maintain this property, and probably share some of this plant material back, as you see on the side of your building. When you, when you put this stuff in, it's going to grow. It's going to come sideways and up. So knowing that they're going to be maintaining it, again, we can add it, but in two years, it's going to be gone, because the plant's going to come.
I don't know that we're looking to add anything, but, Don, you have any comments?
No, so you're saying that the pergolas are more for environmental purposes?
Well, the entrance way, we wanted to beautify them, right? We wanted it to, you know, get some native, not native, there are some native grasses there, but some color and deer resistant plant material.
And you're putting six on Montauk Highway, is that correct?
Um, yes.
Six of which are the same size as the one that's up there right now?
And that was per the original plan.
I mean, and again, we'll take your, you know, I grow a lot of this plant material. I can take your suggestions. We do, you know, a big part of, you know, and listen, I've done a lot of work on Doone Road, through West Hampton, through Main Street here. Obviously, we want to, we put our name on it, so we want it to look good. And now, I think the biggest crucial part is that view from, as I was at Valero pumping my diesel today, looking back at the site, and we have that eyesore on the corner of that gas station, but what are we going to do there? And what, maybe what do you guys want to see? Because that, that can change too, if you want to...
We wanted you to buy the damn thing.
We're trying, we actually spoke to the guy today. We're making a welcome center for the, for the village.
So I, I think that's a big eyesore, you know, as I'm sitting there, I'm looking at that. I do have plant material that haven't taken out of the ground yet, because as we know, all this plant material is pushing new growth right now. So to leave it in the ground is best for everybody. We get an extra foot or two foot, but there's some very large evergreens going in that area. The cedars that were proposed and some of the arbivides are, are obviously deer food. So I, you know, that's where we started, was to say, you know, it's bad enough to deer traffic. And I, I've seen that it's cut down a lot since we're there building, but you know they're going to be back in the winter, right?
They're over at my house.
They're eating right now, right? What are you serving for dinner?
Laying on my lawn.
They're at my house every day.
I mean, listen, it's, it's, you know...
It's a horrifying problem.
Is this open, is there going to be a gate here? We use a fob, or is it going to be open to the public?
I mean, I, we would like to put a gate on the inside side of the trellis. I could probably be convinced not to. I'd rather it not be just open to everyone walking around. The idea is it's connecting our community to the rest of the community sidewalk.
I, I think it's, I think it's what the residents want in the village, want what we want or you, what you want. Some of the residents are very concerned about the whole development, as you know. You went through a lot to get to this point. So I'm not sure if six trellises would even look appropriate there. I don't know. Is it up to AORB, or is it up to the planning board?
I think we're way down there. Let's not, let's not. So I have chaos here.
Fortunately, fortunately, I wasn't here when this started. I came on the board a little over a year ago. So when people approached me in the village, I go, I wasn't, I had nothing to do with it.
So what, so what is your complaint? Because that could maybe help me.
Well, let, let me start, okay, then. What I see is a big green wall, okay, along Montauk Highway. Is that what I envisioned here? No, not really. You know, when I look at the other development along West Hampton Riverhead Road, I see the plantings there. We had a little bit more room to deal with, I'll grant you that, but the variety, instead of having just a big green wall, and you've increased the size of it, so now it's a bigger green wall than it would have been. I'm not delighted by that, personally.
Now, and not to interrupt, the blue spruces, I thought would break the, you get the color and a different growth pattern. And I, you know, I also...
A big green wall.
Blue, a little blue, but... But it's an evergreen, right?
Let's not split hairs.
Alright, so, but it's an evergreen, so it's going to have green. Now, could you use different textures? And, you know, and a little bit of an issue that I see too, is when, when you take multiple plants, they have different growth patterns. And one's going to take the, the area over, right? So, and whether you have a cryptomeria, you have a green giant, or you have a Leyland cypress, or you have a spruce, and why I felt that we had to keep these spruces by themselves, is their growth patterns. They grow six inches.
You're going to have a big wall there.
Yeah, so...
And you're going to be trimming back the wall to keep it off of the sidewalk.
You know, as, you know, I mean, the ownership there has spent a lot of money to give some privacy to their, their people that are going to buy it.
I know that, but they should have also considered the residents of the village.
So what, what do you think the residents, just they don't want to see?
Well, I don't think anybody wants to see a green wall. That's just my feeling, and that's the feedback I'm getting.
You know, I, I think we're caught in the middle between trying to hide all the big buildings, alright? Because we're close to the street, and the green wall. And I don't think there's, I don't think there's a middle ground between trying to hide the structures and not having a green wall.
I did try to...
So I understand his point.
Yep.
But also, I'll tell you the comments that I, that I hear from people are saying, you know, and this is from them. They're going north, they're at the light, going across Montauk Highway. They look to their left, and they see all the structures, alright? So that's the comments that I've been getting, about, hey, do you see the, you see the size of those? So I'm just bringing it up, because that's what I'm listening to. That's what all the board members are listening to. So if there's a way, and then, I know you can't hide them overnight. It's going to take time for the, for the evergreens to grow, but that's been a subject that's been brought up many times to me.
So I think, and I saw that, and I think if, if we look, and we go over by the pool area, now the size of material that I'm bringing in there, some of those plants are 25 feet, like I said, eight-inch caliber. That basically takes me attractive, I bring them over a couple of times. So we're getting that large plant material come up to kind of give the residents or the homeowner privacy, but also block that view, right? So I have a copper beach in there. I have a vestigia hornbeam. I have some large crepe myrtles trying to give some color, but again, so it's not in your face. So I can continue that going down, putting those large pieces that go over the green wall, that you see them, they're 10 feet over.
I just wanted to bring that up, because that's what we're all listening to. And, and that, well, not that we're being beat up, but they're like, hey, did you guys see what that looks like at the corner?
Now, whose big idea was that? Whose idea was that?
That's what we, that's what we, you guys don't listen to that, but that's what we listen to. So I'm just bringing it up, that if there's, if there's some options that maybe we can work with, to try to, you know, I, I think the worst location for visual is at the light going north. You're at...
Well, that's going to change.
Yeah, but as things grow.
That's going to...
You're going, I'm not talking about...
No. Riverhead Road is open right now.
You still have to work around this gas station issue, but it, I mean, I'm, we're the one building it, going there every day. It was a dramatic change, right? It's in your face, right? My sister worked at high school, it's like, oh my God, this is crazy.
Well, that's, that's what we listen to.
But as it's planted, it does feel better, in my opinion. We're trying to work our way down to, to do that. And I understand it's, there's this conflict or contradiction of softening all of these buildings that we're building and that were approved, and the aesthetic from the street. I do think the depot experience is very different than the Riverhead Road.
Oh, 100%, 100%.
So we can, I could take the, I still have very large plant material in the nursery, above ground, ready to come, and I can move that to the front, if, you know, with that.
I'm just, listen, I'm just...
No, I'm saying to, to soften the look from Montauk Highway, instead of having it in the back...
Montauk Highway isn't the problem. He's saying going up Riverhead Road.
Alright, so then, then again...
And what we're, what we're doing right now is looking down the corridor of all of these buildings lining up to one another.
That's the issue.
That's going to vaporize at a certain point, and we understand that.
But I think if I take the larger plant material that I have and bring it forward and sideways, not to tuck it in the back, where none of the residents of, of West Hampton see, because it's in the back of the project, and we bring that to the, to the east and the west, and to the south of the property.
Nobody's commented to me about Depot Road Corner. I, I haven't heard a lot of...
See the size of the plant material?
Haven't heard anything about it. What I hear about is going north, you know, you're at the traffic on Riverhead Road.
And we understand that. We understand.
And that's the view I was looking at today, from Valero. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So it hasn't been, it hasn't been planted, which, you know, and again, if it helps, obviously, to take the heat off you guys, we can, we can mobilize to get there next week and start planting.
Well, you know something, we know that things take time to grow. You've got to finish, you know, there's a process. You know, finish construction, landscaping is at the end.
Well, they all run over my work too, so I try to wait to the end.
Did any, did everybody get written's? No?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And Ron, did you publish yours, or was that just?
We have a copy. I was hoping you could get something, like, return the report, whatever, it'll... I had a couple of questions. Initially, you were going to put in a right turn, but it looks like the county forced you to extend that, that wide, the whole way of putting it to the front. Almost, not quite the whole way, but the road, the turning lane is in. We're waiting for them to move.
Take the poll up.
Yeah, but I mean, the curb one is first jog in, now it's straight. It's continuous. So it looks like you moved the curb back with some kind of squeeze there, you know, the road and the buildings. I have to look, I don't know, I don't, I have to look back at the, something, evolution of that. Something, it's a county permit. You do what the county tells you. I do my best. Yeah. And you do whatever they tell you to do in their right. But I think it was, it was some more space. Between the back and the sidewalk. And I think in the original plan, there was maybe some fencing associated with the pergolas or the gateways. It wasn't continuous, I don't think, but it was something... I remember, I remember the pergolas were smaller, you know, white, and I thought there was some fencing on either side. I don't recall fencing on either side. No, I don't know that the board wants to make... The pergolas really break up the... And that's where we thought the plantings in front of them, and we pulled back the evergreens on either side of it to create the colored detail. It's tough. It's real, not so much at either end, but along the run with those multi-unit buildings, it gets tight between the end of those buildings and the street. There's just not a lot of room. And that's one of the additional challenges. And the way that it looks on paper, and then how it transpires onto the site are sometimes different. And this was, it was tighter than we had candidly hoped. We have a walking trail on the inside of that, but I, I felt like this was a reasonable middle ground to accommodate the aesthetic from the street, as well as softening, you know, queens that we're building as a...
Do you think the residents want to enter these, these ways? Or you had said put up a gate. Do you think the residents want to go in there and enter that area, or just the people that are homeowners there?
I don't think anybody would. I think the intent from Kyle, former planner, was to put the gates in, so it looks like... There was no intention of ever really having that. It's a lot of access, so I don't think that was...
I don't think anybody's going to...
People live in there, maybe want to walk down. And it does make it myself to get in the car and, like, they should be able to walk down and enter the side.
And I, I, I think that's a good point, because, you know, you want your residents there to come to town and spend their money on Main Street, or Sunset Avenue, or whatever. And that's the kind of thing you want.
So, you know, they can get out at, at the last... But like, if you live, if you live in buildings three, four, or five, right, to go to town and you can go through your gate, instead of walking all, it, it's, it logistically makes a lot more sense. Yeah. For the landscaping person, but this, the original plan that was approved seemed to be, was like, let's integrate these people with the rest of the village. We're not necessarily trying to hide the building. We're trying to hide the parking. That's where the dense evergreens. And what they first started to install was more like, let's hide everything. We're our own development, which, that's a, that's a planning more question. What's the concept you want to say? We integrate this into the village, or do we hide?
I think if we put up gates, we're inhibiting that concept. I think if we leave the, the pergolas open, and, I mean, there's no reducing the green wall anymore. You know, certainly, I mean...
I think there's clearly two different dynamics going on here. One is the concern of people roaming around, seeing these buildings. And, and the other is not having a wall of green all the way down, down the highway. I think if you look at the, there's a breakout of a typical landscape for the trellis area. And there's a number of different plant materials there. I'm certainly not exaggerating to start, but they are, but it certainly seems to visually break things up. And so, six or seven, six times over the course of a 30 or 40 seconds or two hours, it makes you go down the park. By the way, if anyone has a question, this would certainly provide breaks in the...
In the green wall.
Yeah.
And, and color. And, and, and there's some grasses, native grasses in there, that will give some fall and winter look there too.
I'd kind of like to have seen an opening where roads, was it C, D, and E are with a island down the middle. I'd like to see an opening in each of those where you could look in as you're driving along. Maybe the pergolas in these pedestrian entrances maybe will accomplish that.
Are they all up?
Natural wood, yeah.
Is it, is it natural wood? It looks like, I mean, I didn't see them.
No, it's, it's natural wood, yeah. I went by there to that one.
Tend them not to be painted?
I, I thought that looked classier than doing like a PVC or something like that.
Was it number, number two pine? What is it? Cedar?
I believe it is pine, yeah.
So on the master plan, when you first approached the boards, you always had six pergolas in those plans?
The planting, the, we always had the pergolas.
You felt that was the amount you needed to break it up?
Well, it, it coincides with the amount of buildings.
I, I realize that, yeah, yeah, no.
Also, I think breaks up the green, the green, right? Gives you, gives you a area to look in, and breaks up that, that line of green wall, as this gentleman said. What do you guys foresee on the, I mean, on the backside of the property? I mean...
The backside, meaning what?
Looking from Valero, that Riverhead Road, also where this entrance is, coming in to the east side of the property.
Well, obviously, you're going to want to shield your prospective buyers from as much of that eyesore on the corner.
Do you want to see a mixture of evergreens over here to maybe get a different texture?
That's where a wall belongs.
Yeah.
That doesn't seem to be changed. The east side is original, and the new plan is the same, so it's just, when they're finished, because they haven't finished the sensors, it's just that they haven't planted around there. So that's going to get double wall of trees with some...
Yeah.
So I think that's going to take...
I mean, that'll shield that.
I just, I don't want to get off topic.
I mean, I could come in and, and get these evergreens on the east side of the property, because they're not in the way of anything, and that would stop that look pretty, pretty quickly if people are upset.
I just want to focus on what's being proposed to be changed. So the original plan and this plan, the east side around the STP is no, is no change. This, this makes sense. I spent a lot of time talking about it. Unless the board feels like you want to see some there.
You know, I just...
And unless you think if we plant it now, people are going to stop.
Well, you know something, if you plant it now, you also have to irrigate it. You may not be in a position... And that, that's why my comment, the comment that I want to make is, and we're hearing the complaints, but the job isn't done, alright? And we may be, you know, to make everybody happy, you plant things that are, they're eventually going to die. So we're, we're focused on what the end result is going to be when you're done. So we know you're still building. So I think to go run ahead and put these things up...
Well, let's, let's break off of that topic right now. Let's concentrate on the changes they want to make, okay? What they've got to do in the future regarding completing the project along the east side is not in dispute at the moment, okay? Let's finish up the conversation on the changes. And... So what I'd like you to do is tell us exactly what you're changing to from.
Say that one more time?
What you're changing from, and what you're changing to.
Well, you basically see the changes going down the front, which we're just going to follow straight down.
So what you've done already along the front?
And then, correct, and then...
What, what, how does that differ from the original plan?
Much more.
Yeah.
More stuff.
And, and there was more deciduous trees. There wasn't as much softening or privacy of these buildings from the street.
Well, we're not seeing the deciduous trees. All we're seeing is the green wall.
They're on the inside of the plan, as Chris was mentioning. You'll see them as they mature above the evergreens.
Yeah, it'd be taller.
Yeah, and we're a lot heavier. All the street trees are staying. I think behind, on the, the north side, where I believe there's condos, these condos back here, that was something that you had, that eight-foot fence there, that cedar, I think it's a mahogany or cedar fence. So that was in question. You know, you see right into those people's windows in the back. So we were going to, we were going to add some, and I, I don't know, there was some existing plant material, whether it was dead or in construction. Some of it came out. We were looking to get a little heavier back there. And on the interior, we were looking to, to use a lot more native plant material. Obviously, native and deer resistant. So a lot, more boxwoods, more grasses, more bayberry, more inkberry. Not stuff that was going to, the deer were going to eat.
I think, as we mentioned earlier, and you're the expert in this, the residents want to see some color there. They, they want to see, and I, you're the expert in this, so are you looking at any dogwoods or cherry blossoms and things like that?
You know, there's crepe myrtle, there's crepe myrtle, there's dogwoods, there's multi-stemmed mayras that will keep color all year round.
That, color all year round would be the key, if you can get that, yeah.
Well, other than, other than when the leaves drop, right?
I had cherry blossoms on, I have several on my property, and, you know, they bloom for 20 minutes. And I got to get the landscape to blow it all out, so...
That's a great point. And, and so we use some magnolias, we use dogwoods, we use...
This is all interior.
All interior, but, but...
You're going to see it from Montauk Highway.
You're going to see it too, because there's a lot, there's large flowering trees that are, are down Montauk Highway that come up over the evergreens.
But they're not developed, then?
You're not going to see them for a long time.
It's going to be a long time, right?
That green wall is going to grow too.
You can already see the copper beach. I mean, the copper beach is, is 10 feet over the green wall.
How many copper beach you got there?
I, I have one up by the, by the, what is that, the gym? Yeah, and then we're going to put a couple more coming down through the property. The vestigia oak and the vestigia hornbeam, also very large, six, eight, eight-inch caliber plant. The festigata oak and the festigata hornbeam, also very large, six, eight, eight-inch caliber plant material. I mean, the crepe myrtles are fourteen to sixteen's, the evergreens are ten to twelve's and twelve to fourteen, so. I mean, they grow too, as you see a lot of people trim them back hard, but you can let them go. That, that's a great August, and it holds its flower a lot longer than your cherry blossoms. Your dogwoods right now, you know, you get a crease of dogwood, you get a good month out of it. Right, you get some great fall color.
Chris, to be clear, in, in the plantings around the trellises, from a color perspective, there's purples, there's yellows, there's.
All, all deer resistant. I did, I did throw a hydrangea or two in there to see if the deer were going to come and if they come.
Give them some heat. I know hydrangeas are thirty years.
I was testing if they were going to come up on Montauk Highway. So.
Garlic growths out there.
The nepeta is, well, the nepeta is like the West Hampton plant, I believe. You go up and down Dune Road and everywhere, they planted everywhere. But the key to a nepeta too is, once it's getting its flower, like now, is to prune it back, because it will reflower. So that, that's a, a good maintenance trick, that it's not just one and done here in, in June. We could get, we could get more color through July, because it will regenerate. So that, that was, that was the, the real part, is deer resistant, using a little more native plant material. We did use as much perennials that are deer resistant, the nepeta, the, the yoro, the lavender, the salvia, and on so with that stuff, that the deer should, should not eat. But again, sometimes they change their mind, now they're eating nastobia. They weren't eating nastobia.
I don't think you can have that big a problem up there with deer, I really don't, but.
They were coming in the back fence, believe it or not, on this back northwest side, and we, we, there was multiple breaks in that chain link, which we shored up, but that seemed to be their, their root. Yeah.
Yeah, we want to make sure you're taking care of our landmark trees that are kind of raggedy, ragged looking things. But that's only, that's only comments I get questions from people out of, they don't let them knock over those trees.
And we have them tagged, and if you go over there, one of the branches fell, I've never seen, they're completely hollow, with the exception.
They're tired.
And you're for sure that they're dead, but they continue to, to leave. But we have them tagged, and they're in the area.
Good.
Along where they're a little bit.
Just don't knock them over, let them fall over on their own, if they're going to.
Well, I don't really think there's a tremendous conversation to be had on the topic, and it is what it is.
Yeah.
I think she definitely, they completely took out the various species of oak, I mean, that's right.
Say that again?
You had two different species of oak in the original plan?
Yeah, I mean, I went to.
You both in the mountain?
That's just, I don't like oak trees, I mean, very.
There were two species in the, and there was scattered all throughout, and they were kind of.
Yeah, I can add them if you.
I think at a minimum, if we add some of those back in, long-term, there's a difference.
As a street, as an oak, right, you, you want upright for street trees, right, because you have people walking. Low-branch street tree, you know, for blocking views, for car traffic, for parking. Wanted stuff like zalkova or lyndon, that's going to be more upright. Oaks seem to drop, you know.
But you don't have any ability to put any street trees in, because you planted the green wall right up against, it's going to grow.
No, on the, on the interior, I'm talking about.
Oh, the interior streets.
And there are oaks, but festigata oak, that's going to grow upright. That, one's planted already, it's right there, and it's on the, on the west side of the property.
There's two.
That's not on your, on any of the. They're not identified.
You got the English oak, right, which is up, up front, because it's festigata, right, it's upright.
But none of the pin oak, scarlet oak.
Well, pin oak, like I said, it's a very wide-branched and low-lined branch.
I'm just pointing out the specs that were on your original.
No dogwood, a lot less crepe myrtle, a lot less. A lot of, a lot of green giants and a lot less pergolas.
Got a green wall.
If you want, I could go back and add, you, you want, you want more, you know, that's, we're not saying we wouldn't add it. I mean, that's why we're, we're here, if you want me to.
Thirty-four approved varieties, and nineteen proposed varieties, but also the numbers are way lower. Six crepe myrtle we had, I think they were, those were along.
Two hundred and forty-seven green giants though. There's two hundred and forty-seven green giants.
But those were along the road, that, in that original plan, come the fall and the winter, you just stare right in there and it would be.
But that was the original plan, and here, now we're looking at green, now we're looking at green giants.
But I thought before we were talking about how the, the community doesn't like looking at queens, right? That's what the complaint is when we're developing, so we put on all these already established trees, trying to soften that.
You have one Japanese maple, or it isn't yet?
Well, we have at least one now, but the other one's.
No, there's, right now, there's two, two large, large.
How developed is that?
Large, like, tall, I mean, height-wise, probably fifteen feet.
It wasn't cheap.
But that doesn't, that's not seen by the residents.
And we want you to take a look at the list you gave us originally, okay? And give us apples to apples, not what we have here. This is a diminished plan that does nothing but create a tremendous green wall, in my personal opinion, okay? And I think we have a, a vegetation count. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to count.
There's way more plants today than there was.
That isn't true. The variety is different.
The count of the trees.
The count is, is maybe larger, but the variety is significantly different.
The budget is.
Significantly different.
Dollars more, because we didn't want to put little twigs in like we were obligated to. We're trying.
You were obligated to is the pivotal part here. You're in front of a board after you've already made decisions on things to do, okay? That's not the way it works. You know that. I don't have to scold you about that.
Chris, it might be helpful if you could describe if you're walking down the sidewalk, going from Depot.
I think what we've got to do is revisit this, Jim. We're going to revisit this.
I, I think perhaps you're not particularly understanding how, how much varied it is along the.
Well, you can. You're more concerned about deer resistance than you are the aesthetics and how it looks. Am I right?
Well, I mean.
Deer don't eat oak trees.
No, I didn't say, I didn't say that. I'm saying. What we were concerned out front was deer resistant, right, with the evergreens, that they weren't cedars. They, they weren't evergreens that the deer would eat. But even on the interior, but the, the perennials and the, the, these species we're using on the inside, shrubs were, were native and deer resistant.
What is the primary goal here? Is it to hide, mask the buildings, or is it to? Because it seems to me a wall.
I don't think we have one particular goal. I don't think we have to define this by having a green wall or having a lack of variety of vegetation on the site. I think really the topic here is, you had a plan, okay, you've changed the plan, and now we're talking about the plan you've changed, okay? I think that's really the topic, and I think what we've got to do is, what I'd like you to do, is sit down with Britton and sit down with Brad and come up with a reasonable middle ground so that this board feels as though we accomplished something tonight on this topic. Is that acceptable?
I think that would be good for all parties involved, right?
Are you amenable to that, Brad?
Yeah, I'm here.
Britton, would you participate in that?
Can we talk, can we talk about phasing change?
Yes, let's switch topics.
So, should I reach out to Brad, or you good with that? Want to do next week, tomorrow, what's good for you?
I'm going to be in London starting next Wednesday for a week, so anytime after that, you can. But Monday, Tuesday.
Monday, it's due Monday? Whenever you want me there, I'll be there.
And then at the next meeting, we'll see, revised?
Brad, you, you want to walk the property?
No.
Alright, so I'll come to your office?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll talk, we'll.
Great. Very good, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
No, you're good, I appreciate your help.
This should be the easy part, right?
Yes, I think so. We're just defining eight buildings as a Phase 1A, different from the eight buildings we originally identified.
Can I clarify something? These buildings, but it's supposed to be a construction. Phase two, but that, so the built construction.
I think that's true.
You have a gate between the two.
It had more product time during construction, but it's always been up the Montauk Highway. It had more construction on Depot Road, except for when they bring a transformer and stuff that happens.
Yeah.
Just, we're, the, the original decision had eight buildings and the public spaces in a phase, and that was tied into the partial installation of the septic system that was accomplished at that point. That, that's still the case, and we're really just looking to realign a different set of eight buildings in the public space to the existing septic, as opposed to the original eight buildings and public space.
Britton?
It's reasonable, it moves, it moves more succinctly from west to east.
From west to east, yeah.
I think it's an improvement.
You okay, Brad?
Yeah.
That's what I said, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If that, if that's an easy issue for you guys, maybe we could just have the resolution just relating to that issue for the next meeting? It's a simple one, but rather than tie it to the, the landscape issue, which sounds like it's going to go on a little longer, the conversation.
Okay.
When does it actually become a schedule issue, your Phase 1B changes?
Like a delivery.
Yeah.
August first.
Okay.
We have one more meeting to go then.
Clean up the landscaping, it was very rough.
That's the kind of music I love.
Does she call up?
Not filed, but we do have a map. It's not fully filed yet, but. I'm not sure what we're waiting for.
I don't think so, I think that, yeah, they could make a motion.
Yes, yes, it will, yeah. So the, the map exists, it's, we have, we have tax map numbers for all of the units.
Simple, modification.
That the town has assigned.
Everything else stays the same.
I think the plan needs to get circulated for the assessor to sign off and for the chairman to sign off here. And I've, I've been in discussions, I, I didn't know there was a town, a county drafts person, but there is, and she's the one that's in charge of all of these things, so she and I have gotten to be very good friends, so.
Alright, so then we'll see you at the next meeting, and we expect to have a resolution for you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And Britton, you're, you're out, we need to hear you.
Yeah, I'll just coordinate with Brad and he'll execute my desires.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
Chair, can you go back to the.
Yes, we have two fill applications on the agenda. What you got to say about those fill applications? Nothing, huh?
So, the, one on, on, on the one road. We did get an app, a new rendering in, and the other one, the engineers supposedly on, I just.
Okay, so we're just going to keep them where they are. Alright, so we have a set of minutes to accept. I need a resolution to accept the minutes as written.
Twenty second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And consultation on our next event.
Light agenda, we're looking at Quonic coming back with their zoning board decision and ARB, and we have a new application we'll have a work session on for four buildings at 123 to 129 Main Street. They're doing a big redevelopment with the courtyards, so we'll hand you those plans before you leave tonight.
That's the bill I had to file, I'm sorry.
Harvey Trucker's property.
Funcho's?
Oh, okay.
That's our, and there might be some other minor things that hit it before Monday, but that's it.
Okay, I need a motion to close it.
Let me make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.